Good.
But allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So with this suggestion starting, I can open up the April eighth town council meeting. Um, all town councils are present as well as town manager Bill Seddon, fire chief Eric Gifford, and we're also live on Facebook. So we'll check that a little bit later, see if there's anything there to answer to, if anybody's listening and has any questions as we go through the meeting today. Um, and it looks like we need a motion to accept the March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty five town council minutes as presented.
So we second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes from the last meeting. Any questions, comments, corrections on those at all? If not, we'll vote Jim.
Hi.
Dwayne.
Hi.
Larry.
Hi.
Charlie.
Hi.
And I was absent, so I will not vote on that one. We will jump down to citizens' requests. No requests, no requests from the um, the town office here, but again, we'll check Facebook live stream a little bit later, see if there's anything there. We'll jump down to managers' report.
Okay. Um, I don't have too much to discuss. Um, one thing I did want to talk to you about is the Viola Rand School. Um. So, as we know, if the voters approve. Um, the school closure on the May twelfth referendum. Um, the town will have an opportunity to take ownership of Viola Rand School. In our current budget, there is no budgetary amounts to handle. The closure, the maintenance, or anything.
Insurance, yeah.
Insurance, anything. So I'm really not sure how to move forward with that because I don't really know the amounts. Um, the finance department did give me. A history of uh, the water, electricity, and oil, and those, this current year is about eighteen thousand dollars. I wouldn't anticipate if we took ownership that we would keep the building open. I would think that we would pay for it to be, or the school would. Close it and winterize it and, and secure it. Um. But still, we would have to have insurance on it. There is the playground that I know will. Cost a lot to insure, especially because it will be completely unmonitored at that, that facility. Um, our. Our uh, risk management associate is coming uh, the week of the twenty first to inspect the school. And they'll be able to give us an estimate on what they think that the insurance will cost, but I'm just not really sure how we move forward in a budgetary situation. One thing I considered asking you to do, and I think I wrote it in a memo, was. We could maybe even ask the voters if they want the town council, Lieutenant Bradley, to take ownership of the school. We have a referendum coming in June. And the ballot needs to be set at our public meeting on April twenty ninth because the ballots need to be available the following Friday. Um. But if that's a question we wanted to pose to the voters, we could. And we could also, if they chose yes, do we approve removing funds from undesigned fund balance to support the ownership of the school? I'm gonna have to come up with an amount, and I don't know what that's gonna be, but um, just moving forward, I'm really not sure. How to address it financially.
Yeah, I mean, the same thing with if it doesn't get voted right, to, to, to remove the school from the, from the um. RSU situation, and I think the, the number presented on the postcard is like three hundred fifteen thou- thousand dollars. That's not quite of our budget either.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
None of it.
No.
So I think, I, I like that idea of maybe adding something to the referendum question, saying if this happens.
Yeah.
Do you.
But there's still, there's still would be a cost.
Oh yeah, there will be a cost.
Yeah, big one. If, if we don't even take it, how is the, the RSU going to assess the costs? If we don't take it, can they sell it to somebody else?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do we get part of that revenue, or does it just go to the RSU?
Just goes to the RSU.
Okay, so what would the cost be if we just gave it to them?
There's no cost to us.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not ours now.
It's not ours now.
Right, but we can lose.
But we lose potential.
Sell it.
To sell it.
I, I see the potential, lots of money to, no matter which way we keep it.
Yeah.
So I would vote not to keep it at all, but the RSU do.
What's the uh, what are the fiscal plan issues? Are there fiscal plan issues?
Yeah, yeah.
Not familiar with that.
I had emailed council some inspection reports that the school had done recently, like within the last year. Um, there's, there's lots of issues with.
I, I just think from a funding standpoint.
If you, if you look at your, what Missy said, she said the ones from Carpenter Associates.
Oh, yes.
When they went through, when they went through all of that, what it would cost to bring it up to.
It's stomach breaking.
It was, if it wasn't gonna be a school, it probably doesn't need to be so high on the code list, but just to say it's a huge amount of money.
Mm-hmm.
Huge amount.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact amount, but it seems to me like I wanna think three million dollars, something like that.
Yeah.
So was, if we would put that on the ballot, asking. If they would want us to keep it, I guess I just don't know what the next step would be. Okay, yeah, now we keep it. What has been their tension of why we wanted to keep it?
Yeah.
And so then we would be kind of still at a loss to know exactly what to do with it.
Melissa, could we not delay any kind of decision about taking it or not taking it? And later on, when the position's developed, we could have a special town meeting?
We could, however, there is a cost to, you know, special town meetings. Um. The next meeting would be November, and I'm, I'm positive the RSU would want a decision.
And, and, and looking at what Carpenter had on, on their assessments. Couldn't we come up with a, a reasonable, a reasonable guess as to how much it would cost us to retain it? You know, knowing that we have to have a survey, we need to have all this other stuff going on, and. You gotta protect it because it's open to the public and it's unmonitored playground, and we don't know what the RSU is gonna take out of there.
Yeah.
But if we said that if we, if we accept it. And we wanna keep it open, we know it's three hundred and something thousand dollars.
Yeah, I, I don't, I can't foresee us keeping it open. As, I mean, if we wanted to, if the residents of Bradley wanted to, I mean. I don't, I don't know what they would.
It doesn't make any sense.
Um, the only thing that I can say about it is that there is, you know, nine acres, almost nine acres of land there.
That was my thought, right? I mean.
With water in the ba- basement.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how wet it is.
Right, my, my thoughts, I was just thinking about a little bit, right? If, if we took it over, if we take it, and we don't move the RSU, it may put it for sale.
Yeah.
And then see what we can get out of it.
I, I wonder if we might be able to take it with a contingency that be under contract for us to. Prior thinking.
I don't think so. The RSU was, doesn't really wanna do with it either, right? They, you know, if they. I think um, Mr. Seer explained to me that the next, we, we are first, and then charter schools that they.
Yeah.
Contracted with. They, and he kind of insinuated that he didn't believe that they would be interested in it.
I would suspect that any commercial you should try to make of that site. It may not be grandfathered in the septic systems and all that stuff. I mean, that's, that's huge in itself.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
I think taking it with the anticipation that we could market it and sell it.
Mm-hmm.
That might be fraught with a lot of issues.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we should take it under those kind of conditions.
And, and uh, she assessed revenue would go back to. The ancestors of, of uh, Rachel Ola?
No.
No?
No.
Comes with the town?
It comes with town.
So it comes with the town?
Yeah.
Still, it could be a huge cost to, to us to get it that way, get it.
I don't, I don't know. I mean, if I had a crystal ball, my job would be way easier. But.
I'd, I'd.
Would be a real risk.
I'd really like to see us develop some kind of a notion. Where we not put it decisively in front of. Citizenship, because if they say yes, we wanna keep it, then it eliminates all of the other options.
Yeah.
And some of those might not be very good.
Yeah.
I think if it's worded properly so that we know how much. The taxes would go up and how much extra it costs to keep it, I don't think the citizen would vote for it.
I think so. I don't think so, but if they did, it would eliminate your ability to make some other decision.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have a choice, though, do you?
Oh, it's ultimately up to the town council. This decision to take ownership of this property. Um. I just feel like the residents should have an opportunity.
I think what, what Dwayne was talking about was not take ownership is, is if this, if the town voted to keep the school open.
Mm-hmm. Oh, you don't have anything to do with that. That was out of our hands. That, we're, we're gonna get that three hundred and fifteen thousand dollar bill plus. Our, our issue assessment. So if the voters choose to not close the school. The discussion of the school property is off the tables for a few months, and then where our taxes, the tax rate is gonna be very high.
Um, you said there is a cost of special meetings, special town meetings. What is the cost?
Well, I mean, an election typically runs between twelve to fifteen hundred dollars per. Election, because you're paying, you know, six to eight people. Um, we usually feed them and, you know, in April works uh. Extended hours, she works a lot of overtime against total election. Um, so that's a typical cost for an election.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's value there. If it's nine plus acres, say if somebody wanted to turn it into a storage unit, you don't need, you don't need water.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, be, another garage for the fire trucks.
Oh gosh. I'm a charge of those. Well, Eric and I are, but I.
And you're saying, there may be some business use, if, if we take ownership of it, and we, you know, obviously we'd have to win. We'd have to ensure, ensure it until something could happen, somebody would take it over, and the RSU doesn't want the playground equipment, they're not gonna take it with them.
No.
They're gonna leave it there. Um. I mean, there, there's gotta be some business use for that. Not that I don't, I don't think the town should keep it long term, but. If we could, I, I don't know, we don't know the exact cost, right, to what, what, what we need to put in the budget for this year, and we don't have the money in the budget for this year, we, we need to contribute the budget for this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But there's gotta be some value there for somebody.
Listen, look, look at the what you've said timeline, it's off at the town of Bradley first, then maybe to a charter school, and then could be sold commercially.
The RSU would sell it commercially.
Yeah, if they sell it commercially, we would still get revenue from whatever business owns it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, yeah, for the, if business owns it, right?
If it goes to a business.
So, I mean. Even if it went to somebody private home already, you still get money off it, but. So I, I just don't think we should be in that business of. Selling it and keeping it and doing all that stuff.
I think we need to do it one step at a time. That's just my opinion, but. We ought to get the vote out of the way from the citizens as to whether or not they want to shut it down. And then let's go forward to develop the position between us and the RSU to see where we wanna go. If we do need to have a special election, three thousand dollars is a lot less than. Ending up with a school that we don't know what the hell we're gonna do with.
Uh, when, when would Madigan need a decision, or the board school board need a decision as far as we, we wanna or don't?
They haven't relayed that to me. I think they're in the same mindset as council, like, you know, trying to box things in stuff. Um. So they haven't relayed that to me. I know that their closure date, if the vote moves forward, is August thirty first. They, they intend to have the school closed by August thirty first.
I agree with Dwayne in where let's. Don't count, um. Already before they hatch in terms of. Letting the vote play out, and then is it possible to ask for a public meeting?
Mm-hmm.
To be able to then bring in people in, to get their thoughts on it, but then leave it to the council to make that final decision?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah. Instead of referendum, just doing a couple of public hearings or a public hearing, yes, absolutely. Yeah. I'm just worried budgetarily wise.
Oh, I agree.
Because.
But then we can also present here the challenges.
Because if, the, if the vote moves forward. You know, to close it, and then the residents come and they say they wanna keep it, and we could do this, just that. We are, don't have any money in our current budget.
Yeah.
To fund. That school.
And even thinking next year, we wouldn't have it next year either, you know, in a budget.
We'd have to put it in.
We'd have to put it.
Right, right.
We, we do have the ability mid-year, mid-budget cycles to tap the. The, um. Surplus funds.
Well, town council has five thousand dollars.
No, but the undesigned fund, we, we.
We have to have voter approval.
Yeah. Oh, that has all voter approval?
Yes.
Wow. Well, I understand your discomfort, but I think your discomfort really is because we don't know you, yeah. I'm, I'm uncomfortable too.
Yeah.
But not if you get a defined timeline and a defined budget cost to do everything we need to do. How much that gonna cost us to do that?
Right, if we need to carry it till, or if we need to carry it for six months, if we need to carry it for a year.
Yeah.
And it's got, I mean, some value there again, for sure. Again, I don't know what the net amount would be for the town, but. I hate to. Can be time and money and effort, I hate to just give it a pay.
That's how I kind of feel too. I, you know, um. I don't know what that back property is like. I, I walked it many, many, many years ago. Um. And it was not this time year, it was probably May or June, and it was to me a little wet. I just, you know, we do need cemetery space. And I've just kind of thought, instead of, we haven't had that survey. Completed on forty-three Highland Avenue, that never was done because of the timeline. We've given our approval to do so, but we haven't done it because of the winter. And do we get a survey of that land to see if there's any. If that's a valuable resource, we should be looking to keep it instead of the forty-three Highland Avenue that we took through tax foreclosure.
Once the decision is made by the voters. Um, and if they decide to. To give up the building um, to the school, have them.
Is the land that it sits on, the nine acres is, is the whole plot subdivided? In other words, could we retain six acres of?
Um, probably, that's probably a question for Dean.
And sell, I, you know.
Yeah.
The other thing as a package, but we would retain.
Yeah.
Certain amount of acreage for your cemetery thing.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, well, that's a good point too. I mean, that's an option, but what I was looking at is. Could we work with the school since they own the property? To either have a, maybe a real estate, a commercial real estate agent at least look at it and see what the approximate value would be? Just give us a little bit of a guess estimate of.
I mean, they'll let us do whatever we want. They're not gonna help pay for it. I know that, but yeah, they, they've been very helpful. They've been. Um, Matt's invited me over there with Ann to look for historical items, and um, mine's the risk management. He was very supportive of him going over and looking at the school, so I'm sure he'd be very, very supportive.
Okay, yeah, I'm just learning the, if we can at least get a guess estimate of what that would look like. Um, we don't. What we're planning was.
And part of the value would be. At least in part, based on potential use.
Right.
You know, for us, it just, it's a.
Right.
It's a.
Bacon.
Bonus.
Yeah, right.
It's liable, somebody else may see it differently, and that would determine, that would help on a value side of it.
Just simply a matter of closing it up to secure it, so nobody gets in there and all that is, that's the cost, isn't it?
So the general consensus is just to kind of wait and see what happens on May twelfth?
Yes, yes, no, those are open.
I certainly think that's the way to go.
Yeah.
Okay, so we can't be able to put anything on this ballot. Before, you know, the deadline will be April twenty ninth for us to put anything on the ballot, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
What is there for playground equipment? I haven't been out back there in years.
I, I really don't remember.
Is any of that. Removable?
He did say it was removable. I think he told me it took. A couple of hours to take it down or something like that.
Oh, that's it?
Yeah. I, I, I think that's what he said. It's been a lot of information coming in, but yeah.
You know, Melissa, one other thing we might pack into our little skulls. Maybe there's an opportunity to force the RSU to retain that until our next budget year.
Perhaps.
Maybe they would agree to do that. Mm-hmm. I, I hesitate to think that, like.
Yeah, yeah, I, I wasn't expecting that tonight. I just, um, looking ahead.
I sympathize. I sympathize with your thoughts about needing some kind of budget if we're gonna move forward with something, but we don't know what something is.
You're saying like a little playground equipment too, right? If we're gonna do something at the old ball field. You know, we have to just store it somewhere, put it in the building. You know, if you can, you find a way to put it in the building and just use it down there, you know, some. Or sell it. But again, keeping it out there is a liability, sure.
Mm-hmm.
Hmm.
And tearing it down will be a cost. Everything is gonna be associated with it, so it's gonna be a cost that I don't have budgeted, so.
Are we still gonna go forward with this postcard thing to inform people about the vote?
It's already gone.
Already down.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You didn't get one in the mail?
I don't think so. I don't remember.
I know everybody got one. I don't remember if I get this from my box or my mailbox. I have one.
It came from your mailbox, because we didn't have it.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me see.
Yeah, they were mailed out. Um. Well, I was on vacation whenever that was.
I, for at least a week.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't, I never got that in the mail.
Okay.
Yeah. If it looks too much like a political card in a sort of way, yeah, maybe. I'm not sure, myself, I don't think I've seen that one.
No, I haven't.
Well, hopefully people have.
Chris had mails, I was about a week late anyways.
I had um, emailed Mr. Seer while I was on vacation, asking if it was okay to mail that out. And he said it was in my mailbox on Saturday. And I said, okay. So I guess it's okay. Um, so yeah. So, all right, consensus is we just wait till after the May twelfth, and then we'll, we'll figure it out. Yeah, okay. Um, regarding uh, one fourteen Cram Street, um, on Friday at one o'clock, we have uh. An inspection scheduled at the property. We're going to meet here. Um. Prior is going to be uh, myself, our attorney, our co-enforcement, LBI. Two engineers from Carpenter Associates, um, our attorney, if I didn't say that. Chief Gifford and myself and Sheriff Stephanie will be going to the property. I do not expect it to go well. I don't think he'll let us enter, although we have a court in order to do so.
He has, man, it's noticeable.
Yes, oh yes, yeah. So, we'll see how that goes. And then lastly, I just wanted to bring to your attention, um, you may have seen it on the news, but. MRC Municipal Review Committee, we have been going through a rebranding process, and the new name is going to be Municipal Waste Hub. We've seen that on many mailings, just to let you know. Um, the plant did accept trash yesterday. Um, they're acting as a transfer station, so trash will no longer be going to the Jennifer Ridge landfill. It will be going to the Norwich Walk. Uh, landfill, which was originally where it was supposed to go when the plants were operational, and they do anticipate that the. Plant will be processing recyclables by the end of the year, so. That's really all I have.
Sure. Was there reason behind the name change or the?
Um, just trying to get out from underneath the whole stigma of the municipal review committee, and really, what did that ever mean? Nobody ever could figure out why it was municipal review committee, and nothing about waste. Um, where, you know. Our, the board and, and executive director is very, very inspired and hopeful by these new investors. They are putting a lot, a lot of money into the plant. Um. So we really wanted to try to rebrand it, so we take into account the recyclable process that we hope to go through.
So, I'm glad. You, you said the name again, Olivia?
Municipal Waste Hub.
And you mentioned by the end of the year.
Sounded like Waste Tub.
A place where all the waste goes and we recycle it all.
That was the vision I got when you said it.
They'd be taking recyclables by the end of the year. Is, is that would be fully functional?
They, I don't know with fully functional, but they hope to be using the digester to be able to get the bio gas formulated going now through the. Um, through the pipeline to the residents, so. And that's all I have from the manager's report.
You have any questions on the manager's report? Just a, a quick, um, circle back to the, the school. Um, like you said, it's kind of a wait and see, but. Are we gonna ask the RSU when they, when they, when they would need a final decision from us?
I think they're the same as what you're kind of thinking, is they're waiting for this May twelfth. Uh, referendum before they kind of.
Right, but would they expect an answer from the thirteenth?
No.
Okay.
No, no, no. I think they anticipate going forward with the budget process, which is still another public hearing about the budget and then the referendum.
Yeah, the school, the school year wouldn't end until too many.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Any other questions on the manager's report this evening? If not, we'll jump down to new business. New business for you missing?
None for me.
New business from the council?
I have just one piece. Uh, I don't know why I was contacted and not Melissa. But I received a communication from Michelle LeBree Daniels. She's the mayor of the City of Brewer. She asked if we would, as a council, like to go and tour the Penoskut County Jail. Obviously, there's a lot going on with the jail and the need for additional housing for inmates. Uh, in a dilapidated jail as it exists today. And I don't know if she's thinking that we're gonna need to all be, as communities. On board with doing something or not doing something, but the only question I had here tonight is, do we as a council wanna go? And, and do a tour of the jail?
So the cost of the new jail will be part of your county taxes, that's, that's the um, push for county municipal. Um, collaboration.
Does it have a location for that yet?
I think they do, but they haven't announced it yet. I, we had actually today, um, Penoskut County managers met with the Penoskut County commissioners. And they keep saying that they're going to tell us when, when, where the jail is very shortly. Um.
You've got a nine acre lot.
Just only one is a jail.
Yeah.
It's gotta be somewhere.
Yeah, um.
Who would?
The.
Mayor that contacted you.
Yeah. Um, so right now, they're, like, one of the things that they talked about this, this afternoon was that they uh. Right now, they have a lot of inmates that are being housed at other facilities, because our jail is full. And so we have to pay, I think it's a hundred dollars per day for inmate, um, for them to go to another facility. And this, the cost hopefully will offset, we won't be paying to transport um, inmates anymore. We'll have um, a place for them to go in Penoskut County. So.
I'd be interested, I don't know when, you know, when they could manage it or schedule it, but.
Well, she said that she would assist in getting, scheduling it anytime we wanted to do it, well.
Um, just on another note, Troy Morton uh, is planning on coming to your meeting on April twenty ninth. Um, he wants to talk to you about expanding sheriff patrol in Bradley, and I kind of explained that. I don't see it for this year, and twenty ninth would be the last date we could do that, but he, he wanted to come and talk to you about it anyways. And he's very, very informative on jail, and I think he's the one who does the tours, so.
What prompted him to judge you about that?
Um, so the town of Milford and um. Was looking to add another patrol position to their, to their fleet, um, in Eddington as well, in Clifton. Um, and so they was just trying to kind of create us all together to see if we could get more patrol for Bradley. While sharing it with those other communities. It would be obviously more than what we're appropriating now, but it's definitely something, you know, if we wanted to consider. He's, he's really good at talking about.
Yeah, it's true, it's always good to talk to Troy. Um, you said the town of Milford and Eddington were looking at adding another vehicle to their fleet. Is that through the sheriff's office?
Yes, they contracted the, the sheriff's department, yeah. I think Milford right now has two or three full-time sheriffs. In Milford, by the sheriff's department.
From what I'm seeing in the newspapers, they need them, they need it, yeah.
Yeah.
I think Brian told me a while back that the state police, no, police, our area out there anymore.
No.
Unruled that, so that's left up to the sheriffs.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess if you want to move forward with having Michelle set up a tour in the war.
I'll I'll communicate, I don't know why she's communicating with me.
I don't know. I just spent a week with her in Washington D.C., so you're gonna hear about that.
I s- I spent some time during the political season with her, but. Anyway, I'll, I'll tell her, we're interested.
Thank you, Dawn.
She is a proud candidate.
Yeah.
Any other new business? If not, we'll jump down to unfinished business. Outside of, well, I guess is on the next sideline item, but any other, any other unfinished business missing?
Um, no, I just wanted to bring your attention to the agenda, I highlighted our meeting dates. Because we're changing them around, um, so if you have any questions about that. Make sure you see me, because we're all gonna be confused until the end of July.
Yeah, thank you for making.
No, it's all good, alright. But, um, yeah, that's it.
And there was a line item there for B front finish business, but I had, we already talked about that update regarding enclosure by the Rams School. Any other unfinished business from the council? Before we jump down to the municipal budgets. It looks like our next meeting will be the public hearing.
That's correct, the twenty lead at six thirty. So in your boxes this evening, um, I I worked on the budget uh. Last week and I brought forward some changes, not really enough to be significant unfortunately, but um. I did lower the budget by twenty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, and I gave you a detail on that on a memo. And so that's where I am.
Yeah, you have me, thank you for finding some money there for sure. Maybe not enough to cover what.
Yeah, so as it stands, the budget is now a hundred and ten thousand two fifty-nine fifty-five. Over our self-imposed budget cap that only allows a two point five percent increase of the full ones.
Not including the uncertainty from the vote, not including the uncertainty from. Covering the school for as long as we would need to cover it, but like you said, we could potentially put in a municipal warrant. To talk about using undue undesigned funds to cover some of those items.
Well, legal fees that we're dealing with right now in terms of. I know there's really no site necessarily in mind, but it seems like we're coming to the end of the. Road around that, I don't know, maybe we would say. So.
Yeah, so as today, um, I just did a new thing today, because there was uh bills in tonight's warrant from uh legal. I think we're at thirteen thousand dollars for legal fees for my fourteen grams. Um.
Just this year?
Uh, that's the last two years, yeah, um. This, this inspection will be a costly thing, because we're having some independent engineers come in, but, um. So, yeah, I did. You know, and the legal fees, we had uh like a three thousand dollars additional carry forward that I didn't anticipate when I did fill the budget in. December, January, so. I did add that three thousand dollars, but I didn't lower the budget, because I need to, we, you know, we need to have a higher amount. Um, in legal fees, and I hope to have. Um, in that budget, if it's approved, would be twenty-three thousand dollars in legal fees. For, and obviously, that's not all for one fourteen grams, you know, we, we've done some different work, which we should be doing. With our legal fees, but um, this is costing us a ton of, ton of money. Unnecessarily.
The next hearing uh at the court is scheduled after the inspection.
That's correct.
Do we know when?
No. Um, I did talk to the attorney. Before I went on vacation, I was trying to schedule this and um. The judge had. Indicated that she was going to call Adult Protect Services, which she has done and has not been successful, as I thought that she wouldn't be successful. Um, and also, they reached out to this attorney in Augusta that Mr. Wayne. Said was his attorney, and that attorney wants absolutely nothing to do with them, yeah, so. It's crazy.
It is crazy.
Yeah, I understand how large it tends to, we only have multiple, multiple instances potentially.
It was encouraging that the neighbors are willing to help.
Yeah.
I'll be giving you this one.
Three things that I have boxed on the, the current budget, just to bring up, and not that we, we always talk about never wanting to kick the can full, or anything. Roadway construction, we have ninety thousand dollars to add into the budget there. And then municipal capital improvement, twenty-one thousand, and fire department capital, three to twenty-one thousand.
Exactly.
Is there anything the council would want to consider there? To get us more in line where. I guess our charter says that we should be. By kicking those cans forward. But, not a long-term solution at all. Just a short-term solution. But that's really the only three boxes I have.
Those are the boxes that we have leading to the end, um.
Right.
You know, we are, our roads are in good shape, I, as I talked to you when we opened up the budget. I would like to do a shim and chip seal on Cram Street, um. Highland Avenue. And I think Penny Lane, um, to try to preserve them. So they stay like they stay in, in condition, good, good condition. Uh, that chip seal, I know it was controversial when we did it, and the residents were upset, but Ten Road, uh Baker Lane, I, I, uh. Deer Run Lane and High Place are holding up really, really well. I live on the County Road of Milford, and it literally is like this, you don't know where you're going, it is falling apart. And our roads are pretty, in pretty good shape, and I think that has a lot to do with the ma- maintenance. Um, so if we didn't move forward with adding, you know, that ninety thousand dollars into the road. Account, I would have money to do that. Um.
Didn't we talk about too, I mean, probably too late for this year, but at some point in, in some of our warrants. For the elections was to say, we want to do this with the roads, and do, do the lawyers give approval to, to make that money, some of that money from.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're too late to do that this year, or are we?
Um, we're not, but I don't, we don't have anything that needs to be, you know, we're really in good shape, um. You know, we just replaced our roof using capital. Investments that we've been saving, um, you know, the fire station is in really good condition and. We try to maintain everything as best we can, that's why I like putting that reserved away.
I agree.
Then you just, the town council gets to vote on using those capital reserves. And we get to do, you know, maintenance that needs, and the roads, you know, if we don't do the night, you know, if we do a lesser amount. Um. Will have. Um, four hundred thousand dollars, which is enough to do those. Those projects that I talked about, the shim and chip seal, um, for maintenance on those roads that haven't been treated.
What do you think that would leave us at, if anyone?
I just talked to him the other day though, because I wanted to see about adding. Additional roads. Uh, Boyden Cram Street and Highland Avenue, that's about a hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Should happen to do on.
Yeah. This estimate was. In January, so. I'm not sure. How asphalt is right now, but. And I would estimate two hundred thousand dollars for that whole project, yeah.
What do you think is the right thing to do with the ninety thousand?
I mean, i- if, if we wanna get all the way. To the one ten. Not that we need to, because we can still, you know, vote as a council to. Go above the, the cap that's opposed by the charter. But if we wanna get all the way to the one ten, we'd have to take potentially some from all three accounts. So we could cut, I mean, if we cut the. Municipal capital proven, fire department capital approval from twenty-one to say ten, that would be twenty-two thousand. We would still need, actually, we need pretty much the entire ninety thousand, we need, yeah. The entire ninety thousand from. What we're budgeting for road improvements, we have four hundred thousand there now. About two hundred thousand, potentially maybe a little bit more, a little bit less. Um, for the projects that are potentially in place for the next fiscal year.
And there'll be other, there's probably ten, ten to fifteen thousand dollars worth of other work. Shoulders, culverts, yeah. We talked, John and I. You know, we have some potholes and, you know, we really wanna cut them out and do it right, because otherwise you're just gonna keep billing. And we can do that when we do this project, we can cut them out and do all of those repairs, so, you know, those, those would be costly.
Did somebody pack recently some of those?
Yes.
The one on, on, on Boyden Street's gone.
Yeah.
Yeah. But just a thought, again, look at the numbers. Not knowing what weight you have coming into the school. And not the school budget, I'm talking about the school itself, the physical school. Either the three, either the three fifteen or somewhere a lot lower than that.
Melissa, if we could attack a hundred and ten thousand right in half. Does that also have the tax impact?
Yeah, so if you get it down to the fifty thousand. It's like twenty-five, twenty-six cents, yeah. And that's based on this current year's valuation. I don't anticipate a huge amount of invaluation increase, I was really hoping that the switch station was going to be. Completed, but it's not.
Oh, it's not ready yet?
Let, let me just ask you, if we. If we take forty-five thousand off of the road. Which is half, do you think that adds cost somewhere down the road? In another year?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think so, but I get it, I mean, it's, you know, I fully get it, we, we, we do have good roads. And we don't have a ton of roads, um, when I first became the manager, there was absolutely no money saved for roads, we, they, it was. Terrible, and we slowly, we started building a reserve, we took some money out of undesigned fund. To do bigger, like we, we did Carter Woods, using some funds and. Um, so that's always an option, you know, if we, we do get in a situation. Where in the next five years, you're not able to reestablish your reserves, you can ask voters to remove. Fund from undesigned fund to do a specific project. Hopefully, the allies will give us some cash.
Since, since you're the road commissioner, I need to ask you. Are you comfortable if we halved that ninety thousand, made it forty-five?
Yeah, and we will be able to do the projects that I wanna do, you know, this year, for sure.
I make that in a formal motion.
I'd second that. Motion to main is seconded to take the budget for roadway construction. Purposely twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six for ninety to forty-five. Obviously, we have still a carry forward there, so that would give an available balance of around four forty-five for the year. Any other questions or comments on that?
Um. What made you just think cats, is any?
Uh. I'm, I'm haunted by the thought that if we reduce it too far, we're only moving the expense to another year, and by the time we get to another. Another year, four or five years out. It's gonna be more than the cost today. Cost never goes up, uh, never goes down, it always goes up.
Yeah.
So. You know, I mean, I probably could have made the motion in full ninety thousand, but. I guess I'm not convinced myself that that would be the right thing.
We have, where does that leave us if we did that? We'd still have to find forty-five thousand, right?
Well, really, um. More than that, but again, the, the council has the ability to vote.
Over to over the cap.
Yeah, as far as completely. Uh, doing away with the hundred and ten thousand deficit, are you asking? It's quite horrible, yeah.
You know, it's, it's difficult, because, um. I was, when I was working on this, it's like kind of. You know, you're going through it, and there's things that we really, really can't control, like, you know, um. The county tax went up, um, twenty-one thousand dollars. The ambulance went up twenty-three thousand or twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, solid waste went up fourteen thousand dollars, um, piling, you know, those, and so these are things that are just like. You know, we, we, we have gone down on our wages expense, uh, because we had reduced hours, um. Our legal fees are continually going up, think of the situation that we've been handed, and we can't do anything about health insurance, those are costs that. Are, are crazy, um, so, you know, when you have a budget. According to charter, we're only allowed to raise it two and a half percent. Um, that would allow us to raise our budget eighteen thousand dollars or nineteen thousand dollars. When you have an ambulance that's coming in at, you know, twenty, twenty-eight, nine thousand dollars more.
Yes, well, how, how old is that charter?
It is very old. Nineteen ninety-five.
Okay, so my next question is, is it, should we be looking at that charter based on today's economical situation? Is it still reasonable to expect that?
It, I, I don't. I get exactly what you're saying, I've always not, I don't like that cola increase, because it doesn't take into consideration your increase in valuation. It's just a straightforward cola, it is a tax. Mechanism to keep your taxes in line, right? To the residents, you know, we can say, this is what we're shooting for, and this is why we couldn't need it, instead of it just being a. Like it, yeah.
Hmm, I'd just be curious on how other people, if other towns have adjusted. Would that look like?
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, I don't mind a proposal uh about cutting the roadway construction in, in half for a year. I mean, we do have a couple things coming up relatively soon, you know, the, the fire truck bond will be paid off in twenty twenty-eight. So three years out, that's what, sixty-four thousand a year, so we'll have that available. And again, a couple years.
I mean, we gotta be cut somewhere, so, yeah. That we don't really have a choice.
So, so there is a motion. Being discussed, any other questions or comments on that before we vote on the motion at hand, which is to, um, again, cut that budget line item from ninety thousand to forty-five thousand? If not, we'll vote, Jim?
I.
Dwayne?
Uh.
Charlie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Marks? I can quick question again on the capital improvement line items for municipal and, and fire department. There's no carry for, carried forwards there, so. Is there anything set aside this year for, for those?
And we deposit that into our investment accounts.
Right.
Ev- every January, um, if we haven't used any of the capital improvement funds thus far. I deposit them into our capital reserves for investment, so they get a higher rate of return than they do.
Actually, exactly.
Yeah, um.
And what do we have for, for balances in there?
So in our municipal capital reserves account as of, this is the end of February. It's one fifty three, one hundred and fifty three thousand and our fire department capital, we have a hundred and twenty two thousand five sixty eight.
And anything? In the foreseeable future, next two or three years?
And we also have sixteen, almost seventeen thousand dollars saved for SCBA. Replacements when we got our SCBA grant, I don't even know how long that was now. Ten, we put in that we would start budgeting eighteen hundred dollars a year, I think eighteen twenty five. To get that building reserved, so when those SCBAs become noncompliant, we can re replenish those outside the budget. So do we have anything? Moving forward.
Yeah, just anything over the next few years.
We did the parking lot. We did work on the overhead door this year at the salt shed. The only. Thing I don't know great about is the boilers over to the post office, we have ours cleaned regularly. And they're responsible for the cleaning and I'm not sure how diligent they are on that, so. That's the only things that I don't know anything about. But on our capital improvement plan, we obviously have computers that. But computers, I don't even know if they should be on the capital improvement plan anymore, they're so inexpensive now, when I first started this. You know, computers were. Two or three thousand dollars, now you can get one for a thousand. So the things we address in our capital incremental panel are the crack ceiling and the municipal parking lot of the fire station salt shed and town office. We have the generator, I can take that into consideration, the whole, the big door, the salt shed. The boilers and the overhead door, the post office. Fire station, on the roof and the boilers. And the trucks, we have a twenty twenty three. Tanker, a pumper and brush trucks, so the only one that's coming up is the pumper line, which we did a five two theme on four, but. Be my existing one. And the SCBA, so you know, we're pretty good.
You see, the other side of this whole equation is the state revenue sharing, right? I mean, we're losing. We're losing it. Well, I can't say a ton, but.
We're losing, and another thing that's happening right now. And I just became aware of last on Friday was. So the budget was passed by legislators, but the Republicans are doing a citizen's petition veto. And the AG is saying that if that veto is in the process, then they can't pass that budget. And if that's the case, we will not be getting any. State revenue sharing or. Educational funding, because the budget won't be passed after for July one.
Wow.
Yeah. I'm going to have a conversation with.
Think of the noise then.
Representative, I don't remember where. Gary Drinkwater is the one who brought forward the bill, so I'm going to pay Mr. Drinkwater a visit. And I, the consensus is that they don't think that they'll get enough signatures. Because I think they need like. I'm going to say six hundred thousand signatures, that's right, yeah.
That's what I have to say.
Yeah, so I'm not a hundred percent sure where it is, I just found out about it on Friday.
There's been no updates since early February on the revenue sharing.
No, no. They typically will do it again in May and we will already already set our budget.
Well, if you look for things that. Our Bradley citizens ought to be able to identify with, that's one of the hitters that they need to think about. I mean, it isn't every year that we've seen a reduction in state revenue like that.
Not for a long time, and that's just due due to the lack of. Revenue coming into the state of the day, has nothing to do with. When Governor LoPage was in office, he took our revenue sharing and used it towards his general, they use it towards the general. But this, we're still getting the the statutory requirement, but our anticipated revenues are lower in the state.
He took a long while to get back what he took.
It did.
He also took a lot of the state's intent.
And he did.
It sounded like we're in a decent space again for the municipal capital improvement. Line item and fire department capital improvement line item, I would want to remove, you know, all of it, again, just like we did with the. The roadway budget, but I would make a motion to. Cut municipal municipal capital improvement budget for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six. From twenty one to ten thousand and the same thing for the fire department capital improvement budget from twenty one to ten. It would be another twenty two thousand dollars off what we're over. To get us around what we were forty five plus twenty two, sixty seven. A little bit over half. Just a thought. Or motion that I made.
Very interesting, comes to these things, you never know about those unforeseen circumstances. Right?
The purpose of generating some discussion, I'll second that.
So motion's been made and seconded to potentially, or the motion that made was made to reduce. The municipal capital improvement line item, fire department capital improvement line item from. Twenty one thousand each to ten thousand each. Any questions, comments on? That motion? Again, just, you know, my reason behind it is, you know, we have hundred fifty three in in one of those accounts, hundred twenty two in the other. Account, we don't really have anything majorly foreseeable for the next year. It would just help us where we are now, you know, being over, we're going to be over anyway, we're still going to have to be over, but. I think, you know. Reducing that isn't really kicking the can down the road too too much because of. What we have already and and the great job of Missy and Eric and and the council itself for. Making sure that those balances have been there available for the next or in the past and we're still be at. It sounds like we're not going to use ten thousand each, I don't think, doesn't sound like this year, so. That would still increase both of those line items potentially for next year.
For the first time in a long time. I think what I'm seeing out there in the community is an awareness around the cost. Particularly with violin, and I think the citizens expect us. Hold the line as best we can. So I I'm not opposed to reducing those to ten thousand.
Any other comments, questions before we vote? With Jim? Yeah, yeah, I'll, yes. Dwayne? Charlie?
Hi.
Larry?
Hi.
Marks and I.
Could you explain the snow removal contract? Is that a contract?
Yes, yeah, it's a yearly contract with. Our current contractor, Ray Carby, hopefully he will continue to to want to do it.
But it's an annual?
Yes, it is an annual.
He had a mild year this year, that's why I was wondering.
He did have a mild year, but in the years past, he's had, you know, it it always works out.
Yes.
It was mild snow, but he did a lot of sanding, it's all thing, you know.
Sometimes ice and that kind of stuff is worse than the snow.
So this county tax line item. What can we do there? Anything else on the budget? For this evening? So there's no other changes for this evening, on our next meeting, which is scheduled for the twenty nine. You'll make those adjustments, maybe anything else that pops up between now and and then, so it's a three week gap between now and then. And that will, it will be what is presented for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you can make changes that evening as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We can make changes that evening as well, and then the voters can make changes. There's nothing else on the budget. We'll move down to the next line item, I guess you're rechecking the live stream just to see if there's anything there.
Okay, we have eleven comments. Michael Eastland, where would one pick up election papers for town council and what is the signage rules on the main? Rules for Main Road, so nomination papers are can be picked up here at the municipal office. The signage, you're allowed to, you have elections signed, I believe it's. Within five hundred feet of the town office or two hundred and fifty feet, one of those two, I can find out spread for short term. Edward Jackson, do we know if there's been anything happening with a solar farm by Great Works Stream? We have not received any information about a potential solar field on by Great Works Stream. And that's what we have.
Okay, nothing else there, I'll make the motion to accept the municipal warrants that were presented this evening. Motion's been made and seconded on the warrants, any questions on any of those? I'll vote, Larry?
I.
Charlie?
Hi.
Dwayne?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Marks and I. Next meeting is set for April twenty ninth. Which will have the public hearing on the municipal budget as well as the dog ordinance, municipal or public hearing. And like Missy said already, you know, she put on the current meeting minutes, a lot of the important upcoming dates for different meetings. Here with the RSU, when absentee ballots are available and with the ones that we do. For the upcoming vote on the viola rain closure. Anything else from anybody? Not, I'll make the motion to adjourn for this evening. Everybody in?